Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six oh one P. M. Roll call.
Mayor Joe Chai.
Present.
And Mackintosh here.
If I unmute Mr. Daly.
I'm here.
Present.
We are all here.
I'm here too.
And Randy.
Oh, I thought you were saying Randy Hall.
Yes, it's good.
All right. Ledge allegiance. Mr. Ferguson.
Ledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report, the reminder that the planning committee still has two vacancies. Interested candidates inquire at City Hall or contact the mayor for the planning committee. And the Parks Board, their Parks Board did have positions open, which they don't. You don't have to live in the city limits, wink, wink. You have to be within three miles of the city, and so you could be on the planning committee if you'd like. Plan. Join and find out. Number two ecology notice of compliance. So this goes way back from back to oh nine when the city was having various issues with the wastewater plant, which triggered all of the hoopla with our with the upgrades and the requirements. And there was strong recommendation from Department of Ecology not to allow the city to have any new sewer hookups, which would which stop development and things like that. We got the letter this last week. We're released from all those orders. So our wastewater treatment plant has is officially made Department of Ecology happy, and we're good to go.
Now, when do they do their next inspection so we get another list?
Let's take small wins.
Okay, okay.
That's why we get them.
Hold on, let's celebrate first.
So, yeah, obviously, that's a long, multi-year, multi-person council, mayor, clerks, everything to get us to this point. So it's all good news. Subdivision pre-application meeting, we did have another developer submit a proposal for a fifteen-home subdivision. This would be on the south side of D and E on vacant land down there. And so they're starting surveys and what are the other requirements that we propose that they'll need to have for their actual application? Good news with that is that, as you know, those streets are small, one-way streets. In fact, E is gravel as you get down towards Park. Part of their requirements will be to improve those streets, which will include pavement and any other required improvements for a subdivision. So we very well may get some free street work out of that deal.
D and E North or D and E South?
South. Your neck of the woods.
The corner of the street.
Just north of the Vader Mansion.
Correct, yeah, there's vacant parcel, vacant property behind between.
What size homes are we talking about here?
A single-family, single-family stickboat homes. Mike is drawing maps.
Yeah. Behind the walls and up there?
Yeah, you got night.
Between there and the street.
Tents.
Yeah.
Okay.
So where Park turns, when it turns into?
Before, before Park would turn to the left, if you were to stop there and look to the right, there's a large empty field that runs from the creek all the way north.
Nice.
Yes. And so, and there actually on the D side as well, there's a few homes that would face D Street. So he would base D and the remainder would face E Street. So they would do street improvements to both sides.
Yeah, they could go either.
What was that?
These years that, yeah, they're neither.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, and so that that's part of the requirement, so.
What's that, what's corner of the end of E with the big dumpster?
The end of E with the dumpster? Oh, at the end of East Street, so not quite the last house. There was a single wide mobile home there that was in disrepair. For a while there, it was a real eyesore with a variety of trash and whatnot.
Yeah.
The developer purchased it. They have a demolition permit. They're going to tear the house down, and they're going to clean it all up and put something new in there.
But, yeah.
Another new house.
Yeah. Those people, I know because I haven't seen them for a while.
That's because I don't think they live there anymore. Because the house is going to get torn down. Yep, another cleaned up property.
Pretty bad.
Yep. Yeah, the county was involved in, the health department was involved in that one. So, good news, once again, that's the pre-application. Once they submit the full subdivision application, we'll report back to you. And lastly, more good news, the, as you know, the city was under, had a, the two thousand and twenty-two accounting accountability audit that was taking place. City Hall provided a lot of information to the state about that, and there were no findings. They had a few recommendations just about saying dates during meetings differently and things like that. So nothing, nothing big, big. So congratulations to the city staff for staying on top of things. All right, moving on to council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
No.
No. No. Okay, moving on to agenda approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. McIntosh. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
A motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes, nine eleven, one twelve, two thousand and twenty-three.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to apply, approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Voucher approval.
Motion that we approve the amended extended December, amended extended December, two thousand and twenty-two at one hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cents for a December, two thousand and twenty-two total of three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents. The end of January, two thousand and twenty-three, at ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-six cents for a January, two thousand and twenty-three total of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents.
They have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, planning committee, they did not have a meeting this month. They didn't have anything on their agenda, but I can tell you that that's changing. Just today, the, the new planners from S C J Alliance, they were in the area, so they stopped by, and they have a variety of things that are going to be, starting to be worked on. As you know, just a couple of years ago, we updated our comprehensive plan. We were very late in the game in doing that, and that is a, that has like a five-year cycle or something like that. And so it's already time to start working on that again. So it's time to work on the comprehensive plan. Planning committee will be involved with that. As you know, a little while ago, council approved annexation of five parcels within the city limits. So that's going to require planning committee work, which will involve public hearings. We also have updates to our critical area ordinances and a variety of other code issues the planning committee is going to start working on. And so at the next planning committee meeting, the new planners will be attending remotely, and they'll give the planning committee an update on all that kind of stuff that's coming down their direction. We're very excited about the new planners, and they're excited to be working with us, so. Good news about the comprehensive plan, the state has allocated grant money to every city in the state. Just an easy application to get it, and so it'll be fully grant funded to do that update.
Oh.
So that's good news, we won't have to pay for it. As long as we're in good standing with the state, we approve the composting ordinance.
Okay.
Moving on. Parks Board? Not this, well, how about elected official comment?
Yeah, okay.
Kelly Shy with the Parks Board.
Hi, everyone. So, um, we had our meeting last, hold on, was it this Wednesday or last, last week? And it was, it was a nice long one. We covered quite a, we pretty much are just set our schedule for our recycling events for the year. Yes, going through the parks real quick, we.
I posted them on the website.
We're pending on, we don't know if we've gotten the RCO grant for McMurphy or not, but it'll be close if we do, so. Anyway, we also have the, with the updates at Warden Park, a lot of people have been able to see what's going on there. We have the shelter that's been going in and work being done on that. The jail's been getting updated. We have a three-sided CO that's going to be going in soon. We have three park benches, and we're also going to have to, part of the, part of the RCO grant that we've got for this, we'll also have bike racks and hopefully another table that'll go on one of the rear back concrete, seven-by-seven concrete pads. So we have some finishing work that's going to be happening here soon, and I'm trying to think what else. And then, once we get the jail and the pavilion and the bathrooms painted up and looking nice too, which that's on our plan to get, to try to figure out when to start doing the scraping and painting and whatever contracting we need to do for that, we want to have our official grand opening down at Warden Park. Um, other than that, it's just our recycling events. Oh, we had our Christmas tree lighting ceremony in December, first, I think, first weekend of December, and it turned out really awesome. We had to have had at least a little over a hundred people that came, at least.
At least.
Well, because we handed out sixty-seven blankets and stockings to kids, so not including anyone who had come and gone beforehand. And the vendors that we had there, I think we had seven vendors, and they all said that they would come back again. And a Warden coffee stand, they donated, they, they donated their proceeds to the park as part of a fundraiser, and they made a hundred and seventy-five dollars in profit that night that they donated back to the parks. In total, we made over a thousand dollars that night, and that's, that's just profit, not including covering the cost of renting the church hall and anything else that costs us along the way. So, and then, in general, for our upcoming recycling events, some of these, this is a draft, I'll have an official one coming out probably next week, because I'm working with Melanie Case from the Solid Waste Utility through Lewis County. And so, I'm over seeing all kinds of typos, sorry about that. So we have two paper shredding events that we're setting up this year. One will be in February, date probably, probably the twenty-fifth. The other one will be in August. We're setting up a appliance scrap metal drop for, we're hoping for March eighth. And we were hoping to do a reply to tire recycling event, but we found out that they need to find, that there's a contract that's going on with Ecology right now, whether or not their program is approved. So once they find out, they'll let us know. And then, of course, we have our big chipping event, Chips for Trails at McMurphy Park. That should be, that'll be the spring, it'll be April twenty-second, drop off, I have a typo there. Drop off will be from ten to three P. M. If we have anyone who would like to volunteer to help move limbs, to help spread the chip, that'll start at nine o'clock. Show up at the earliest at nine, come whenever you can to help out. And then we will also have, I forgot to put them on here, we will also have beta resident pickup only dates that same week. I believe we chose a Tuesday, we chose a Tuesday and Wednesday, and it's sign up, so you can either call City Hall or on the flyers and information that we'll put out. We'll have our lead for the event is Mo, and we'll have her phone number up as well. So you just get on a sign-up sheet, you pull your, pull your chipable stuff out, and she, we will come and pick it up, so. And I think that's overall it. I mean, you can see what we have on the works, we're looking for ideas for more fundraisers and community events. And that's kind of about it right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
And we have a photo from the.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number one, oath of office for City Clerk Treasurer, Lisa Huckleberry. Got to stand up. Tradition. We'll have to do that. That's, you go right. Thank you for warning our team. All right, I will try not to read too far ahead so that you can follow us, although you have one there. Lisa Huckleberry.
Hi, Lisa Huckleberry.
Hereby accept the position of clerk treasurer for the city of Vader, Washington. And do by hereby, and do hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And do hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the official duties of the Office of Clerk Treasurer as prescribed by law.
And discharge the official duties of the Office of Clerk Treasurer as prescribed by law.
And I do further hereby solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And do further hereby solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the charter of the city of Vader to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And the charter of the city of Vader to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving on to add number two, council consider ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two, the budget amendment number one. So there were a couple of things that, that were changed, and you see that in the whereas is. For one, if you remember in the original budget, the donations for the parks, there were, it was separated in the budget. There was a McMurphy Park line item, and there was a Warden Park line item. Parks Board voted to combine those two, so there was only one pot of money for donations, because usually when folks donate money to the park, they don't say, I want it to just be this park, they just want it to be for all parks. And so, so that was one change, just combining those two. It was also noticed that during the budget, the sewer testing line item was missed to be added from that. So we needed to add that on so that we can get our, do our sewer testing. And then the last item, as you know, we've had a variety of park projects from the jail, the roof and the chimney roll over, so they started in, in two thousand and twenty-two, and they rolled over into two thousand and twenty-three. And so that needed to be accounted for in the budget, which is why the Parks line item was changed.
I'll make a motion, then we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three zero two, the budget amendment number one.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two for the budget amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Further discussion? Hearing none.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, council to consider resolution oh four, two thousand and twenty-three surplus inventory. So as you know, the city has a variety of extra items. At the end of, at the end of each year, the city is required to do an inventory of any of the items over the declared value, which I believe is, so fifty dollars that we lowered it to recently? Fifty dollars? So anything over fifty dollars is considered an asset, and so we track it. And so if these items were deemed to be surplus, a lot of it is over in the shop. And so by giving it surplus, then the city can get rid of it, sell it, whatever, so. And I believe we already have another list of items that were surplus.
Those, that manages the.
Yes, the goggles are still over there.
Okay. He manages the dispersment of said items.
We do.
We, so like, and getting time, anybody?
It was thought of maybe last summer to, for the city to hold a garage sale, where we just took all the surplus items out, put it up for sale. But, but that didn't happen. So there is already a lot of items that have been surplus. This is just additional items that have been surplus as well.
So can, can we, I mean, so since the park was requiring, you know, extra funding, and there's other civic things that, you know, trying to fund around here, can we allocate any kind of monies from the course of these items to that?
We could absolutely.
Commit, commit it?
We could absolutely do that. And, yeah, the, the issue hasn't been what to do with the money issue, it's been, how are we going to, how are we going to sell it? Who's going to run the garage sale?
He's going to run the garage sale. So somebody has to be the front runner, like, hey, we're having a garage sale. I got a dump trailer.
It's optional.
We had, last year, we were talking about May Days, doing a booth at May Days.
Yeah, but we didn't.
And, yeah, it, well, we got to, yeah, I don't know what happened. But then, this year, we're planning, and I know this should be another topic, but we're planning a Fourth of July this year, right?
It was budgeted for.
So who's, sorry, I'm.
It's okay.
Topic.
No, we're waiting.
Who's planning, who's planning on the Fourth of July? Is it going to be, like, who, who are we planning on running it? Is it going to be Park Board, because they don't, aren't doing anything, obviously?
Well, administratively, City Hall, when I say City Hall, I mean, the staff will handle arranging the fireworks, will arrange the portable bathrooms, will coordinate with the school to make sure the property is mowed and ready to go. And we'll probably put up the banner and everything, and so we'll just make sure that fireworks happen. And then, if any local community groups, such as the Park Board or.
Lions Club.
Or the Lions Club are interested in having a little fair, whatever you want to call it, carnival thing associated with it, they absolutely could come to the city and say, hey, we really want to do this, and they apply for a permit, and then they can go do the thing. So that's fine. And I know that, I know the Park Board and the Lions Club have both talked about Fourth of July already, and so they're already in the, in the brainstorming phase.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I know that from the Park Board meeting that we've been entertaining, trying to incorporate something in there, and it was also expressed Lions Club didn't get to touch on it yesterday. But they are interested in doing the hot dogs and popcorn sales again like they did last year. So we know that we'll have at least that much. I don't know if we're going to have a volunteer again for music like we did last year or not. And we've been throwing around a lot of ideas for, we don't know what capacity parks will be able to do anything yet, because there's a lot of overlap between us and parks and the Lions, and so trying to support. So more, many hands, some days, some more volunteers.
Say, we got a few hands running, maybe.
It's certainly a great.
Facets of the whole, yes.
It's certainly a great opportunity for fundraisers of variety of, you know, if, if organizations wanted to get together and have something there. And segueing back to the surplus.
Yeah.
The idea was to sell the surplus there.
Yes, you would do there also, I don't know.
It's certainly a possibility, we could set up a city garage sale with all the surplus, have volunteers run it.
I'm, I'm motioning to approve resolution oh four dash two thousand and twenty-three surplus inventory.
The motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve resolution oh four, two thousand and twenty-three for the surplus inventory. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons, further discussion?
I think we did it on orders. We're good.
What did I repeat again? Oh, did we do it a second, second?
Yeah, we already did it, but that was the, that was the conversation.
Okay, well, my mistake. That's what happens when the conversation goes so long, I forgot that we had the motion. Anyway, so first up, it's just to discuss it, and then we can create a plan on how we want to, disperse it after that. All right.
Kid miss bread bags at the Fourth of July.
Bread bags. Who wants a tieback suit? Tieback suit for you, tieback suit for you.
Should have done it at the twenty-two.
Oh, no, I didn't.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor of resolution oh four.
Be one or two, I don't know.
For the surplus inventory, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Listen carries. All right, and lastly, council to consider resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-three updating Timberland Bank checking account signers. So you can look on there, see who are, who we're modifying it to, obviously. Miss Diane Boyd would be coming off of there, and Lisa Huckleberry would be added on to it.
Motion to approve resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-three updating Timberland Bank checking account signer.
To the motion of Ms. Ferguson to approve resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. McIntosh, any discussion? None, all those in favor of resolution oh five, two thousand and twenty-three, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, public comment? Any members of the public sign up for comment? Probably not, nope. Anyone online, on public, have anything to comment on? Elected official comment?
I missed the composting conversation, so that was.
Yeah, I'd like to make the comment.
Oh, all right, Bob Goff.
Yeah, I'd like to see the water system put on the agenda, get started on that as far as getting that back from Lewis County.
Okay.
Good comment, Bob, I like it.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
I support that. So, back to composting. I, I missed the last meeting, like, my daughter cheering a basketball game, only a few left. Was, we were adopting a, I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, it was in your packet last meeting, you can probably review it if you'd like, but I will summarize it for you.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, like, I'm kind of.
So in one of the latest legislative sessions out of Olympia, the state mandated cities that were over twenty-five thousand people or cities that collected yard waste as part of their normal garbage service, which LeMay does offer yard waste collection at a fee, and so that is an option within the city. And so that qualifies us to need to adopt a composting procurement policy. And what this policy says is that it requests that the city, as best as it can, use composting in public works projects. use composting in public works projects. And there are limits as to how much, for instance, like cost, if it's cost prohibitive, uh, the city doesn't have to do it. It says the city should strive, which means try, not shall, right? To use fifty percent of the annual compost materials collected from the city in projects.
In projects, city products. So I did read that. So the, the city used to offer the residents a spot to dump compost down at the waste treatment.
Well, it was, it was chippable, chippable limbs.
Yeah.
It wasn't really compost, but.
That, that becomes compost for trails, which is part of city parks and for landscaping projects and things like that. That is technically compost.
Yeah. So we, the city did offer that. Um, and, um, I know Mike was on the council.
Yeah, it, uh, what happened with that, we actually cleaned up the area because everybody would bring out trees and they would bring out like big stumps and concrete and they were, it was turning into a dump site. So every year it was costing the city a fortune to clean it all up. But we, we ended up trading a excavator.
Broken.
A broke down excavator for a guy to come up, clean it all up. He flattened it out and put, uh, perimeter blocks around it. And then after that was all done, we realized that it's not our property. It's the railroad's property. And they didn't want us doing it there. So we really, we could move those blocks to someplace that we have and.
We could. It, uh, I mean, towards the end, when it, when we finally shut it down, it was, it was a pile that was twelve feet high and it was.
It was this building at least.
It was a hundred and fifty feet long.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was immense. I mean, it was like a logging site down there. I mean, it was crazy. And, and I mean, it just got out of hand. It was, it was
With, with.
Cause it was open.
The property that the city actually owns is like right up front center and then we have parks and that's about it, right? So we don't have a space to, to do that and.
And if we did.
And then we'd have to man it.
We'd still have to figure out how to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Which is where the Chips for Trails program that the Parks Board is doing.
That's where my brain was going. And I was like, okay, well, if we make a landing pad twelve months out of the year, then when we go to do that, then it's just a matter of stuffing a chipper with material.
Yeah.
That can be transferred from there to wherever you want to put it, you know?
There was a lot of, we were getting.
Make a flower bed with the Vader sign. You know, where you want to do that kind of thing, you know? We have a material that you.
It was, it was just something that we couldn't, it wasn't sustainable for the city.
I think it became part of a county dump.
I appreciate the, the clarity on that because the way I read it and the way I was understanding it was a little different.
That's the history on, on our former, um, limbing area.
Yeah.
But yeah, with the composting ordinance, it's just a, you know, the city will do its best to use it and, and, um, in a variety of projects. And I imagine if there was a project, it was probably grant funded from the state. That grant will probably come with requirements to, to actually do it. And so, um, there's no real financial obligation to the city. It doesn't cost the city anything. There's a little bit of time involved because they want to report every other year on how we did, things like that. So.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not really that much for the city to, to do it. That's the, that's the composting ordinance.
Okay. And that hasn't been approved or?
It didn't, it did not pass at the last meeting.
Okay. We'll see it again. A review version of it or?
We'll, we'll see. We may have.
We have to adopt some kind of, don't we have to adopt?
Um, we're looking up what the, let's call them penalties are for not, for not complying with the state. One of those probably will be no longer have grant funding from the state, things like that. So we'll, we'll see and we'll get back to you. I was gonna report out once we know what the, what the penalties are for not having that.
So we can't use the chipping and all this stuff in the compost?
Sure, we could do that. Oh, we still have to, we would still have to adopt the ordinance.
We have to adopt the ordinance and then we can use these things to, as inputs to.
Oh, yeah.
For that.
Oh, yeah. Complying with it wouldn't be a big deal.
Just the very beginning of it said, King Inslee mandated.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel you. I just, and I apologize again to let off when I wasn't here. I wish I had been here. I wouldn't have to bring it back up again.
You know, we don't have to have the words Governor Inslee in the where, in the whereas is if you would like. We could, if, if that's what you would like, we could remove Mr. Inslee.
Be Captain Joe?
From the ordinance whatsoever.
That's a great idea.
Whereas.
To remove them, period, would be perfect.
Whereas the
Yes.
State legislature.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No.
Any other council member comments? Yes. Yes.
But so with this mandate, because LeMay offers it, how does that make the city, how does that tie you into it that?
It's in the contract with LeMay. So our contract with LeMay, um, talks about yard waste collection. And so because of that, the city's on the hook for yard waste collection.
So that LeMay actually takes it somewhere.
That's correct. Yeah, they have a spot up at the landfill where they, they put all that in compost. On behalf of the city.
The only way that you guys are actually involved is because it's just in the contract wording with LeMay.
But we allow it. And so had, had we known, maybe we would have not approved, approved the contract.
Yeah, that would have been a little.
We could, we just approved it like four weeks ago.
In, in an amount of time, we can redo it again.
Well, it would come from the residents. But it would, it would go up. Right. So it would go, but it would go up to there. And then I'm not sure if you can, I, I imagine you can go up and get a truckload of it if you want. I'm not sure if they charge for it.
And it's free to dump compost at Lewis County transfer site. Take a truck. Yeah, it's free. That obviously if you're gonna have to pick it up from your house, it's gonna, they, they have to charge a transfer fee.
Yeah.
They can't, because they can't mix it. They can't mix it with the trash and.
Yeah. Our resident, uh, solid waste expert, Kelly Shai has a question or answer.
No, I, I just want to input into that more because we are with LeMay and because we, the park has been working with, uh, solid waste for the last few years to develop recycling programs too. Um, Melanie Case over there has stated to me that there's more additional recycling programs that we can get available to us for free through their, their grants that they have. That's how we're actually paying for the chipper, for the chipping event. Is they have a special grant. We submit all the documents and photos and everything to them. They actually weigh out everything at the end of it too. And, um, they estimate how much we've been recycling and whatever. And they include it in their grant reports and she usually reports that back also. So that's something that could probably somehow tie into it. And the reason why, um, we actually started the shipping thing was kind of a supplement to all that disaster that was happening back there also. But, um, she had mentioned, uh, because I've been talking about that last recycle with her and setting up stations, learn to what we've seen in Castle Rock, where they have the bins for cardboard and plastics and glass and everything. Yeah. And, and we have that available to us now for free. But we have to supply a location and we have to supply someone to let them know when it's full and to make sure people are not contaminating it by throwing their kitchen garbage and stuff into it. So, um, that's part of the program we're hoping to go up more into.
Just a quick thought, because I don't think it needs to be as big as Castle Rock, because they have like a whole line of cans. But what about this side of the school barn?
Yeah.
That little, that cement.
Castle Rock School District to, to approve, allowing the city to utilize their property for that kind of a, a site. So we, and.
And then in the city. I think it's right there so that, because.
Yeah, if John drives by or any, anybody who's on council or any of, anyone in the public even can just let council or city hall know. And then we can report it into, um, Melanie at, and at solid weights and you would send something down there.
And that'd be the city providing, uh, space for the residents to dispose of.
Yeah, and we supply the person who's in charge of making sure that it's being watched, monitored.
We can encourage, we can encourage the community to kind of police it, if you will.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
I like that. I like that. You taking notes, Captain Joe?
Talk to the superintendent.
Hit us with the new resolution.
Um, let's see. Jason, Jason, opportunity here. Jason, you have any, uh, elected official comment then?
Nope. Yeah.
All right then. If there's no other comments, the meeting is adjourned at six forty-one P M. Everybody?